Good afternoon and welcome everyone to this May 10th Full City Commission Meeting. I would like to first invite you all, those who are willing and able, to please stand for the invocation immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank you for the many blessings in life. Thank you for our friends, families, and neighbors. As we approach Mother's Day, we ask for a special blessing for all mothers. Grant them a joyous day filled with love and time together with those they hold dear. Guide us regarding the businesses presented before us this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. City Manager, I also want to, on behalf of the Commission, lift up in prayer Mike Graeme, one of our city employees who earlier today had a workplace, had an accident while that, on the job, and I understand that he may be through surgery?
Yes, sir. He's out of surgery.
Out of surgery, and we're just praying for his family as they make their way through recovery. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir. We have one. Item 5.06, which is the presentation of a proclamation recognized in May 8th through the 13th as Economic Development Week.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners Richardson and Miller, will you join me? I think we're going to be going back and forth on a bunch of procs. Hello again. My colleagues and I are now going to present a couple of proclamations for the community's benefit. I want to invite first forward Casey McLaughlin. McLaughlin, how are you?
Good.
Good. Welcome. Everybody, welcome Casey. Casey is a support coordinator at Florida State University Computing Center. He's going to receive this proclamation. He also has been a member of the bike community in this city since 2007 and commutes almost exclusively by bike since 2010. He serves on the FSU Bicycle Pedestrian Working Group, and he's participated in numerous bike workshops and events around town. So y'all watch out for him and help keep him safe as he's moving throughout our city. Casey, proud to present this proclamation today. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas for many, for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. Whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. And whereas the education of residents on proper and safe operation of bicycles and motor vehicles is important to ensure the safety and comfort for all users. And whereas various cycling organizations, independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has been named a bronze-level cycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists. And whereas the city of Tallahassee continues to make investments in bicycle infrastructure along Fambu Way and protected bike lanes downtown, that you see that big green box known as Bike Boxes. And whereas the city of Tallahassee was ranked number three in America's Best New Bike Lanes in 2016 by People for Bikes. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has ranked number 38 in the listing of 50 Best Bike Cities in Bicycling Magazine. We think 38 nationally is good. We want to be one. And now therefore I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, along with the Tallahassee City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May in 2017 as Bike Month. And Tallahassee and urge all citizens to participate by celebrating cyclists during the course of this month." Will you all please help me welcome and present this proclamation to Casey on behalf of... Comments?
Mr. Gillum, Mayor, on behalf of the entire cycling community here in Tallahassee, which I'm happy to say is growing quite rapidly, I want to thank you for this proclamation. I'm honored to receive it. And I also, in addition to that, want to thank the city for their investment in biking as a mode of transportation here in the capital city. Keep it up. I think right now, at this time and place in the city's history, we're at a unique position to greatly affect the quality of life and people's options for moving about this town. Across America, cities are discovering, and the evidence shows, that investments in cycling are more than the sum of their parts. I've seen, if you look at the evidence, you see that they, if you invest in a bike lane, helps with the economy, helps with overall quality of life, it helps with air cleanliness, all kinds of things. So, thank you again, and I want to encourage everybody in here, if you haven't tried cycle commuting, I got addicted 10 years ago, it's a great way to get around. Thanks again.
I want to invite my colleague Commissioner Curtis Richardson, who will present a proclamation on Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Week. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. It is indeed my honor and pleasure to present this proclamation recognizing this week as Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Week. For those of you... Thank you, Mayor. He takes care of me that way. Literally, he's got my back. For those of you who may not know, perinatal mental health awareness, it actually relates to a period of time prior to the birth of a child to the few weeks just after birth, when parents are susceptible to mental health issues surrounding the birth of a child. And so we are recognizing this week again as Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Week. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas perinatal mental health is an issue of great concern to mothers and fathers and families, as well as their healthcare providers, and is therefore of interest to the city of Tallahassee. And whereas many women and men are not screened or treated for, nor sufficiently informed about perinatal mood and anxiety disorders because they may lack comprehensive healthcare, the understanding of the disorder, or where to go for help and care. And whereas increased education and heightened awareness of the incidence of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders is critical for all citizens of Tallahassee. Perinatal mood and anxiety disorders do not discriminate. Families of all races, income levels, ages, and backgrounds are impacted profoundly, contributing to developmental and behavioral outcomes in attachment disorders in the young children of affected women and men. And whereas perinatal mood and anxiety disorders are treatable with timely therapeutic interventions, community-based supportive services, and medications. And whereas it is critical that citizens, community service providers, and support systems have a greater understanding of perinatal and anxiety disorders, the spectrum of symptoms and critical factors in identifying mothers and fathers at risk in order to provide timely diagnosis and treatment, as well as appropriate support through community service and referral systems that coexist to facilitate recovery. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in him as mayor of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim the second week of May 2017 as Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Week. And I would like to invite Dr. Heather Flynn to receive this proclamation. Dr. Flynn will receive the proclamation on behalf of the Center for Behavioral Health Integration and the Department of Behavioral Sciences and Social Medicine in the College of Medicine at Florida State University."
Thank you. I want to say a few words.
I just want to thank the city, Mayor Gillum, and Commissioner Richardson for this. I think most of you are aware that depression and mental health disorders are ranked the second most disabling conditions in the world, above diabetes, cancers, and lots of other conditions. Unfortunately, as it reads in the proclamation, most women with mental health issues do not get detected or treated around the transition to having a baby. And so many of the concerns that, and issues that cities deal with in terms of health, well-being, economics, education, and I know the mayor's been such an advocate for early childhood health and education, this issue affects all of those kinds of things. So we were just really thrilled that the Commission and the city has put attention on this issue. May is also Maternal Mental Health Month in the United States and the state of Florida. So this is about awareness. We will look forward to working with the city over the year to do more in Tallahassee to shed light on this, but also get services in place for women. So I want to thank you all again.
I want to invite forward my colleague Commissioner Nancy Miller for National Public Works Week here in Tallahassee.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, everybody. Well, we're here to proclaim National Public Works Week, and I'd like to ask up Karcee Patrick to come up with us, and also any of our public works people to come up and be with us up here. That includes their boss, Mr. John Buss. You know, I was really anxious to give this presentation because Public Works literally makes up the fabric of the community, and often these guys go underappreciated because we all just take for granted everything they do. But the fact is that their work is what allows us to actually move around. Their, the roads that they keep up for us and the ones that they build for us move goods and services to where they need to be. They move customers to businesses. They move all of us and our kids to school and downtown today. And we, you know, we just get out in the car and we drive around, and we don't even think about it. But these guys are the guys who make it possible for us to do that very easily. They're the guys that keep all of this up for us and build our new roads. So, really. So that's why we honor you every year with a week for us to stop and take some appreciation. Okay, here's our, here is our proclamation. Whereas in 1960, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed that National Public Works Week would serve as an annual reminder to the value of public works professionals, that they, what they contribute to our lives. Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to efficient operations of public works and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, parks, and canal maintenance, all of those stormwater ponds we have all over town and all that collects our rainwater. And whereas the different, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works professionals. And whereas since 1960, the Public Work, American Public Works Association has sponsored National Public Works Week. And members use this week to energize and educate citizens on the importance of public works, particularly for the planning, building, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities and enhancing our quality of life. And whereas this year's theme, Public Works Connects Us, celebrates the vital role public works plays in connecting us all to each other through the provision, maintenance, and improvement of structures and services that assure a higher quality of life for all of us. And whereas the Big Ben branch of the American Public Works Association is hosting the 2017 American Public Works Association Florida Chapter Public Works Expo here in Tallahassee on May 8th through May 12th, attracting hundreds of public works professionals from across the state of Florida to promote continuous industry advancement. And whereas the underground utilities and public infrastructure, electric traffic, and community beautification and waste management provide services to our community that are integral, an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the storms over the last year have demonstrated how greatly the health and safety and comfort of this community depends on these facilities and services, as summarized by the Florida Chapter of American Public Works Association tagline, "First to respond and last to leave." And whereas we celebrate the hard work and dedication of public works professionals here in Tallahassee and throughout the state, the nation, and the world. And now therefore I, in, on behalf of my Nancy Miller, on behalf of our mayor and the city commission, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me, him as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim May 21st through May 27th as National Public Works Week here in Tallahassee, and further encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions which public works officials make to our everyday, every day to our health, safety, and comfort and quality of life. Now I'd like, yes, please come up and make some comments.
I would like to thank you, Commissioners, for all your support with APWA. I am the Florida Chapter Committee Chair of American Public Works, Public Works Week. And we'd just like to thank you. We're enjoying ourselves, having a wonderful time, and thank you for all your support. Thank you so much.
did. These folks over the last year had to deal with more storms in a little bit, and they got our community back up and going expeditiously, and we greatly appreciate them for the work that they do every day. Now I want to welcome back Commissioner Curtis Richardson for a presentation on Building Safety Month.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite our Growth Management Director, Ms. Karen Joomanville, to join me, as well as Glenn Todd, to receive the proclamation. Karen is the Director of Growth Management, of the Growth Management Department, and Mr. Dotson is the Building Official for the Building Division. I will warn you ahead of time, this is a very wordy proclamation, so bear with me. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation. These modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, though not in Florida, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great. Hmm. Again. And whereas code officials, partners in community safety and economic growth, the theme for Building Safety Month 2017 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2017 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore I, Andrew D. Gillum, mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities.
And Karen, I'd like to present you with this proclamation and ask if you would say a few words. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, for acknowledging the importance of building safety and for recognizing the important role that our staff members and other professionals play in upholding and enforcing codes that result in the safe buildings that we have in our community and for the public. From our plans examiners to our inspectors, our code enforcement officials, the fire prevention officials, they live, breathe, and, they live and breathe this stuff, and they work hard every day to make sure that the buildings in our community are safe. So thank you very much for the acknowledgement.
Now for the VVIP presentation. That's, that's y'all, the very, very important individuals. We now have, my colleague Commissioner Miller will make presentations for National Drinking Water Week and present a few trophies to some of our talented youth in the city. Commissioner Miller.
I get to do the fun stuff today, and I'm here for two reasons. I'm here to proclaim National Drinking Water Week, and we have yet another proclamation that I'm going to read very quickly before I get into the real important business, and that is to award, put out, give out some awards to folks, to some fourth graders in our community. I'd like to ask Dave Roberts and Jennifer Porter to come up, and if there is anybody else here that works with our water utility or works with our water quality lab in the audience, I'd like for them to come up too. Jennifer and Dave are both engineers with Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure, and they are very critical to keeping that best water and best tasting water in Tallahassee in that good, clean condition. So we have huge thanks for them. And if anybody needs to read about any of this, down on the back of the room, we have the 2016 Water Quality Report for you all to, to look at, and you can also download that off of the Talco website. All right, so quickly, declaring. Whereas the mission of the city of Tallahassee Utilities is to provide excellent services and facilities to support a high quality of life for our community, and whereas the city has provided safe, reliable drinking water for over 125 years, and each May, the city water utility commemorates National Drinking Water Week. Whereas the city of Tallahassee won the 2016 title for Best Tasting Drinking Water in the rigorous competition sponsored by the Florida Section of the American Water Works Association. And whereas Tallahassee is the only water system in Florida to win the state competition three times, in 2008, 2015, and 2016, and hopefully 2017. Whereas the water utility owns and maintains 27 deep wells drilled directly into the Florida aquifer to provide Tallahassee customers with more than 25 million gallons of drinking water every single day. Whereas the city operates a highly sophisticated, state-certified water quality lab to ensure that our drinking water meets the highest standards. And whereas in 2015, the city was awarded the prestigious Governor Sterling Award, which is Florida's highest achievement among both public and private entities for performance and organizational excellence. And whereas Florida Governor Sterling Award recipients are considered role models by which other public and private organizations throughout the state can evaluate themselves. And whereas the city's water utility professionals are setting the standard of excellence, always looking for innovative ways to deliver efficient and responsive service to more than 80,000 customers. Now therefore I, Nancy Miller, in subbing in for my mayor, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in him as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do, he does proclaim the week of May 7th to 13th as National Drinking Water Week, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the city's best tasting drinking water and commend the dedicated water utility employees for their outstanding contributions in maintaining safe and dependable water, drinking water supply for our community. So I'd like to, I'd like to ask Dave and Jennifer to say a few words, and then we'll get on with the important business of awarding some awards.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that we are two of a very large group of dedicated city employees working diligently to provide you, the community of Tallahassee, with reliable, safe, high-quality drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, one of the keys to keeping our water clean is, is education. And every year, the Underground Utilities Department, along with the American Water Works Association, has a competition in the fourth grade classes of the elementary schools all over the city. They have a water conservation poster contest for the fourth grade students, and this competition encourages all of the fourth grade students to use their creativity and design posters related to saving water. It's fun, as well as a great learning experience. Co-sponsored, as I said, by the American Water Works Association and partnering with the city for the competition. And this year, we received 800 poster entries from 20 classes all over Leon County. So now it's time to commend the district-wide winners and officially recognize them for their great work. And their posters will be on display in the second floor lobby out here through the rest of 2017. And I really, we all want to thank the teachers and families that are here today for the encouragement and support that they provide. So I will call each winner's name so that you can come up to the podium individually for a photo. for a photograph. First of all, honorable mention, we have Brianna Barfield. Brianna is in Miss Olman's class at Florida A&amp;M Developmental Research School. So let's get the trophy and get the picture. All right, next, we have Branson Hurst. Branson is in Miss Byrd's class at DeSoto Trails Elementary School, and he wanted to attend the ceremony, but he is unable to be here. So accepting the award on his behalf is Miss Morris from DeSoto Trails. Tell them your name.
Dr. Poole, the Assistant Principal.
Thank you very much. So you're here, okay, we got your trophy, everybody's all set. Okay, third, Rashir Kalasoo. Rashir is in Miss Smith's fourth-grade class at Conley Elementary School, and Rashir is away on a field trip with school today. So his father, Barack Kalasoo, is going to accept, as well as his mother and his sister, to accept the award. All right, next, are we all set? Got our pictures? Okay, the third place award goes to Hannah Knight. Hannah is Anderson Miss Muse's class at Robert's Elementary. Individual pictures. Oh, I can't, anyway, okay, second place, Jason Wheeler. Jason is in Miss Morris's class at DeSoto Trails Elementary. All right, Jason is in Miss Morris's class at DeSoto Trails. First place, Kendall Reed. Kendall is also in Miss Morris's class at DeSoto Trails Elementary. Wait, wait, wait. Go ahead, that's all right, we'll get you. Well, congratulations to everybody, all of you. You know, clean water is essential to our community and to our state and to our planet. And these guys have put their creativity to work to help get that message out to their friends, their family, their other students. And for that, I really want to thank them for participating in the contest and give them a big congratulations for winning this year. And these posters are going to be displayed out front for the rest of the year for people to see.
Awesome, thank you, Rashir. Snap away, y'all, please, feel free, feel free, this is your house. Congratulations again. I want to invite forward, and you all are excused if you want to flee the chambers now to avoid the rest of the beating. Congratulations, congratulations again. I want to invite forward Ben Pingri, Al Latimer, and Christina Perez, please, to receive a proclamation. Ben Pingri is the Director of Place, Al Latimer is the Director of the Office of Economic Vitality, and Christina Perez is the Deputy Director of the Office of Economic Vitality. Thank y'all for taking time and joining us today, and I'd like to, you don't want to be next to me, ma'am? It's okay, that's all good, it's all good. Get to present a proclamation in honor of Economic Development Week, and the proclamation reads, whereas in 2017 is the 91st anniversary of the International Economic Development Council, and whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, and public policy advocacy. And whereas economic developers in Tallahassee Leon County Office of Economic Vitality, OEV, promotes economic well-being and quality of life for this community by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide stable tax base. Love that. Whereas the Office of Economic Vitality stimulates and incubates entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas the Office of Economic Vitality works to attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop a vibrant community, and improve the quality of life in the City of Tallahassee. And whereas the Tallahassee Leon County Office of Economic Vitality is the economic development agency of record in our community. And whereas under the guidance of the, guidance of the community's recently adopted Economic Development Strategic Plan, Office of Economic, how many times can we say economic? Economic, economic. Vitality works to attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop a vibrant community, and improve the quality of life of the City of Tallahassee. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, with the authority vested in me as the mayor of this city, do hereby recognize May 8th through 13th, 2017, as yet again Economic Development Week, and the City of Tallahassee will remind individuals of the importance of this celebration, which celebrates and expands on career opportunities for improving the quality of life. You all also gave a great report, I guess a week or two ago, sharing with the community some really important vital statistics about the economic health and well-being of the Tallahassee Leon County area and the larger region. We're so thankful that y'all have been able to, in one year's time, stand up a really important and vital instrument for bringing jobs, retaining talent in this community, and growing our local economy. So with that, will you all please help me celebrate Economic Development Week by presenting this proclamation to this very, very capable staff?
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. We truly appreciate this opportunity and this proclamation. We also thank, have to thank our partners and our local businesses. But once again, thanks to you for continuing to demonstrate how important economic development is and its ability to create jobs, advance our workforce, to grow the economy, and to help us achieve the long-term objectives in the strategic plan. We, we look forward to continuing to work towards the future with your support. We, we look forward to continuing to build a brighter future and making that our focus every day we get up, every day we go to work, because the people in Tallahassee certainly deserve it. Thank you.
Commissioners, we're now at announcements, I believe the city attorney has one.
I just wanted to let everyone know that's here, and also anyone watching on television at home, that this Saturday, May 13th, at Leon High School Athletic Field, we will have the 2017 Relay for Life. And the Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's biggest fundraiser each year. The city has had a team now for three years, I think, and we certainly have a team made up of very, folks from various departments that will be out there, starting at 3:00 in the afternoon and walking the track until 11:00 that night. So we encourage all those here and all of those watching the show, so there'll be fun and games and food to eat, and it is all for a great cause of fighting cancer. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And city attorney, you have been more than dutiful in helping to corral the energy here at the city. Do you know who the chairs are, by the way, of the city's campaign this year?
Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer, oh, great, 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 great. So look forward to being there to support y'all's great work. Absolutely. Commissioners, we're now at the point in the meeting where we will take input from individuals wishing to address the commission on agenda items. Are there any speakers? Treasury Clerk.
Mayor, we have no speakers for items on the agenda tonight.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we're now going to move on to, there are no consent items, are there? No, no consent items, on to city commission items. And I don't believe there are any scheduled, and so we'll move on to introduction of ordinances. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 17-0-18. The first and only public hearing scheduled for this ordinance will be May 23, 2017, at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners at 6:00 p.m. in these city commission chambers. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting amendments to the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan and providing for severability and conflicts. The next introduction is 12.02. It's ordinance number 17-0-21. The first and only public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for May 24, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. in these city commission chambers. The title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, creating section 21-242 City of Tallahassee Code relating to the implementation of a solar farm electric service rider and providing for conflicts and severability. That's item 12.02. Item number 12.03 is the introduction of ordinance 17-Z-13. The first and only public hearing for this ordinance will be scheduled for May 23, 2017, at the joint meeting of the City Commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners at 6:00 p.m. in these city commission chambers. The title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in R-4 Urban Residential and Residential Preservation 2 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission. Finally, item number 12.04 is ordinance number 17-Z-14. The first of two public hearings is scheduled on May 23, 2017, at the joint meeting of the City Commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. The second and final public hearing on this ordinance will be scheduled for June 28, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. The title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in R-4 Urban Residential on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission. Mayor, I'd like to have deemed admitted items 12.0, the ordinance relating to items 12.01 through 12.04.
Great, please show those items introduced without objection. Commissioners, we're now on policy formation and direction. Item 13.01, City Manager.
Thank you, sir. 13.01 is Tallahassee International Airport Update. At your April 5 meeting, Commissioner Miller requested an update on the process of establishing a foreign trade zone at the International Airport. This item provides an update on the efforts so far and the steps necessary to implement an FTZ. Chris Curry is here to provide a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, appointed officials. I'm here to provide you with an airport update as it pertains to our full pursuit of international status and to also incorporate a foreign trade zone. October of 2014, you authorized the airport staff to pursue international status and enter into the required MOA or MOU with U.S. Customs and Border Protection. Thus far, we have changed the name of the airport. We assembled a committee of public citizens and city employees to develop new branding and marketing material and signage. Out of that, we developed the new international airport logo, and we continue with the rebranding of the airport. What we have not completed is enter into the required agreement with Customs and Border Protection to become a user-fee airport. Also, the design and development of an international arrivals facility and the development of the foreign trade zone on the airport. A foreign trade zone on the airport would not only benefit the City of Tallahassee, but it would also benefit the surrounding counties of, certainly Leon, where we're located, Madison, Gadsden, Liberty, Franklin, Waukulla, Jefferson, and Taylor Counties. The airport would apply for a foreign trade zone under the alternative framework concept, which means that those surrounding counties that within a 60-mile radius or 90-minute drive would be able to set up the framework to establish a foreign trade zone if they had an operator that desired to do that within a short period of time after applying to the foreign trade zone board. So that's the interest to the other surrounding counties. The Tallahassee Airport would serve as the grantee, so we would be the recipient of those fees that they would pay for the use of the foreign trade zone. The benefits of an international arrivals facility in the foreign trade zone would be that the surrounding counties would benefit, as mentioned. We would enhance the potential growth of the airport and the region. Coupled with the CBRE agreement, which you approved as well, CBRE is a real estate marketing firm, one of the largest in the world, and we have a contract with them now to market the more than, more than 800 acres of property around the airport. So a foreign trade zone that could be coupled with that agreement would make that property even more valuable. Would better position the airport for new air service, general aviation, and cargo So this is a timeline based on an expedited process if we had the funding available. So if you look at the two blocks to your left, those are the items that we have completed. So the FIS was approved by the City Commission. We did a feasibility study to, to see if a foreign trade zone at the airport would be of benefit. Out of that study, we identified two companies locally that could benefit, Danfoss Turbocore and GT Technologies. We submitted the application to be a user-fee airport, completed the feasibility study, and we're working with the surrounding counties now to obtain letters of support. the surrounding counties now to obtain letters of support. I believe that we have five letters of support out of the seven that we're seeking, and these are from economic development agencies in those associated counties. The next three blocks are what we have left to do, and again, this is based on an expedited schedule if funding was available. We would immediately come back to the city to approve a resolution for the airport to be the grantee. CBP staff would approve the plans for the FIS. The FIS, or International Arrivals Facility, must be built to the design standards of Customs and Border Protection, and in order to have the foreign trade zone, you must have the International Arrivals Facility built so that that would house the Customs and Border Protection staff that would provide oversight for the foreign trade zone. So, we must complete the design of the facility again. CBP schedule, that would be determined by MOA or MOU with CBP. We would form the grantee organization, and we would then file an FTZ application. Early 2019, we would hire a person to head the organization, develop the documents for the grantee. We would enter into an agreement with CBP to oversee the foreign trade zone, construct and build the FIS facility, and then late 2019, we figured we would have a fully developed facility that's staffed and also incorporate a foreign trade zone. As we stand today, the funding for the build of that facility is contained within Blueprint 2020 under economic development. So, we are certainly seeking any alternative that we can find to expedite the build of this facility. So, I'm glad to take any recommendations or questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Miller?
In our agenda packet, you have a list here of the, basically, the benefits that are associated with this. So, could you reiterate those for everybody, including people that might be watching this and want to know what the advantages are to this designation?
Okay, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I could certainly talk freely about the benefits as some that I've discussed. Again, the foreign trade zone, by definition, is a piece of land or area where a company could exist, especially an international company. They could bring in parts, supplies, and they could sit in that zone for an indefinite period of time, and they would not have to pay tax tariffs or duties on those parts. So, when I talk about it, I talk about it as if, when we see these big, large, international car manufacturing plants like BMW, they're generally located in a foreign trade zone, so they bring all the parts in necessary to assemble a car. The parts can sit, and they're not taxed until the car rolls off the assembly line. So, it could be a catalyst for us to bring in manufacturing or industry to the area, or the surrounding counties could benefit as well. So, with the large amount of acreage that we have, we can serve a large region of people and communities around and be the hub for economic development.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Maddox?
The last time we tried to do this, it was based on a company we were trying to attract that did screens for computers to shield, help your eyes when you look at computer screens a lot, and keep people from the side from looking at the computer screens. And they wanted to be able to import raw material of wire mesh and not pay taxes on it like it was a computer screen until they're ready to move the product, like Mr. Curry described. So, this is just another major step in trying to take what right now is an underutilized asset and make it into something that'll be an economic hub for the community. Our airport already has a great economic benefit for Tallahassee and Leon County, but we have so much property that can be used to do even more things than are done today. I get a lot of ribbing from folks about it being an international airport and, you know, can I catch a flight to Paris? People don't understand that cargo is a major goal for us from a business perspective. I think we do, what, 9.5 million pounds of cargo a year? That's the largest in the Panhandle. Pensacola's around 6 million in it, Mr. Curry.
That's correct, and it's increased since we had those numbers.
So, we're already a leader in our region in moving cargo with FedEx Ground where it is today. If we can take these steps to get a permanent customs presence at the airport, set up a foreign trade zone, we will be able to attract more business. And when you attract more cargo coming in, you get more landing fees. More landing fees can help us get more passenger travel. So, it's all connected. So, you may not be able to catch that flight directly. You can catch a flight to Paris, but you have to go through somewhere else. But you may not be able to catch it directly today, but through these steps, it will lead you being able to catch it directly sometime in the future.
You're here.
One more.
Commissioner Miller?
I just wanted to go over what it, in all these discussions that I had with you previous to this meeting tonight, what I understood to be the steps we needed to take, and I'm going to go over those so that you can correct me if any of it is not correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
First of all, we had to identify a funding source for the design, and that was going to be about $1 million.
That's correct.
Right. The design could be completed, if we could find a funding source, it could be completed by the end of 2018. Then, we have to execute our MOU with the border people, customs people, and finalize the application and submit it. Application review takes about 10 months. Construction to begin possibly in 2019 on the facility, that's 5-plus million dollars. And I was wondering, this is a Blueprint 2020 project, but I think that the point here is that we should probably place that as a priority, because this is important not only to our community, but to the communities around us. And my understanding of the trade zone is that any manufacturing plant that locates anywhere in any of those eight counties is going to really benefit, just as Commissioner Maddox described, from the product. So, after I've said all that, I really wanted to share that with my commission mainly for the prioritization. And if there's anything you want to correct me on, please feel free to do so.
No, I think you've done a great job summing it up, and the number that we have for the construction of the facility, of course, that's an estimate. It could be even lower, but we won't find that out until we go through the design phase.
Okay.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, are you coordinating with the Office of Economic Vitality and place on this as an economic development project? Is there any coordination there at all?
Yes, we have discussed that over time, and OEV has been quite helpful involuntarily in wanting to partner with the airport in this endeavor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Curry. Thank you for your continued leadership here. Commissioner Maddox, for your continued service and leadership as the city's liaison to the airport as well. You know, I think we have firmly stated this is an area in which we want to explore more deeply and go into. I visited a airport down in south, or just off the Space Coast, that we're describing the growth that they've experienced with regard to airplane maintenance, largely around private plane maintenance.
Melbourne Airport.
This was south of there. So, you've got, it's closer to Palm Beach, I should have said. I said Space Coast, but Melbourne has probably experienced the same thing. And there are a couple of them down there that are struggling due to the frequent visits of the president, where previously they were, I don't mean it as a dig, but previously they had folks who could fly their planes in there, get them worked on, get them maintenance, and then fly them back out of that area. And so, I just wonder, at one point, we had conversations at the airport around the role, and I believe there was sort of a partner that was in play at the time around what we might be able to do from a plane maintenance standpoint. What made these places interesting, because they were little itty-bitty airports with international designations, basically being able to take aircraft from a lot of these islands, you know, folks who, you know, fly these planes into the islands. So, I just wonder whether or not that's still part of the conversation, if it's off the table, whether or not we even see that as part of our future opportunity. Obviously, freight is a piece here, but given the amount of land, the potential on a mechanical school or even just the porting of planes, any update on that, if any at all?
Yeah, I think that's certainly in play, especially for what you've described as an MRO, which is maintenance, repair, and operations facility and overhaul facility. And we've had conversations over the past two years with different MRO companies that are located within close proximity of the airport. So, that's certainly an opportunity and one specifically that we're also including in our master plan as potential growth opportunity.
The international piece was particularly interesting to me because of, obviously, Florida's proximity to, frankly, all points south islands and also South America, that if, you know, it's a short, what, hour flight for most of those, you know, most of those planes, if not less, for many of the jets, and that maybe there's a role for us to play, you know, in this space. But I want to fully endorse what you proposed here, fully endorse the accelerated calendar that you've outlined here. Blueprint has its commitment, and I think at the appropriate time, if there's such a request, you know, the manager could bring that for the commission's consideration around the acceleration of those, you know, those resources. But Commissioners, is there a motion on the item?
Just moved to accept the report.
All right. The item also seeks the commission's feedback regarding the timing and design construction of the international arrivals facility. As was described, do you feel like you have the guidance you need in regard to that?
I do, and certainly based on funding, we would proceed with an expedited schedule to build out the facilities and incorporate a foreign trade zone.
Got it.
I think that the suggestion, and if you need a motion, this could be it, but that we have this examined as part of our budget process, what the options might be. Okay?
Got it.
Thank you.
I think as fair as this, a second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I totally forgot you were in the ceiling. That's a unanimous aye vote. Motion passes. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.02. City manager?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, the city's land development code allows accessory dwelling units as part of the overall goal of providing a wide variety of housing choices to city residents and allowing more opportunities for extended family living. Staff is seeking policy feedback on whether the commission would like changes to this section of the land development code in order to better meet the intent of the regulations. John Reddick is here to make a brief presentation on the issue.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gillum, Commissioners and appointed officials. John Reddick with Growth Management. Thank you for the opportunity to come forward today to discuss the city's accessory dwelling unit regulations, which really was brought forward due to a high number of customer service inquiries about this, and as well as a reflection on 2016 AARP friendly community survey, and some opportunities to really capitalize on some of the findings from that. Just some brief background, an accessory dwelling unit, that's sort of a technical term. You'll hear me refer to it as an ADU. It's more commonly referred to as probably a mother-in-law suite or a granny flat. It's essentially living quarters that are separate from a primary structure on the property of, like a single-family home is typically what we see. It's smaller than the structure, which makes it accessory, and it'll have amenities like a kitchen, washer dryer, living room, sleeping quarters. We don't necessarily require that, have all of those things to be designated as an accessory dwelling unit, be attached or detached. And one important feature for us locally is that we require to have shared utilities with the principal structure, which keeps it from being calculated into your density, and it also prevents other leasing issues in our low-density neighborhoods. Just to go through a few existing examples locally, this is in Lafayette Park. This is actually a fairly recent converted detached garage. But as you can see, and this is actually a current code requirement, it has to be, have similar design features and materials used as the principal structure, which helps it sort of blend in a bit. Where you've seen this probably most highly implemented is in Southwood, and this is a carriage house, which, supposed to being on the ground floor, would be above an existing garage. And then, this is in Levy Park, and it's actually tucked away back there, and I did that intentionally just to show that we require it to be in the side rear yard, so it's not intrusive, not easily visible from the public right of way as well. Just to run through some benefits, some of this language is pulled directly from the land development code, as is today, is it provides a variety of housing options that can range from different income levels, different generations. It can enable self-sufficiency, whether that's a means of income, or whether it's a way to downsize to a scaled living that's a little more maintainable for your lifestyle. It promotes opportunities for extended family living. That's especially important with a shifting demographic, to allow people to have a feeling of independence, but also connection to family and resources that they may need. And it's also a creative strategy to address some infill housing development without impacting having to raise density levels. Just to run through our existing policies, within the multimodal district, we actually incentivize it. You can have a single ADU, attached or detached, with any single-family or duplex, as well as with commercial properties. Outside of the MMTD, it's in all zoning districts, but it either has to be attached or inside the structure, or it has to be part of an existing detached garage. But citywide, the bigger issue we run to is our size restriction, which is that it can't be larger than a third of the square footage of that principal structure. So, if you're a single-family home, for example, and we have a maximum of 750 square feet, and up to 1,000 if it's with a commercial use, but we don't see that as often. So, again, staff estimated within the last year, we probably had approximately 100 inquiries about doing accessory dwelling units. We've seen nowhere near that many come through for permitting, and that's, one of the biggest issues is the scaling of the size restrictions. Like I said, we incentivize it in the MMTD, but in our older neighborhoods, we typically see smaller home sizes, just, you know, building patterns. And so, for a smaller home, and you're limited to a third of the square footage, it's not feasible to build something that's small. And the other is the geographical limitations for doing a detached, where the majority of our single-family homes citywide are outside of the MMTD. They don't have the same flexibility to be able to do it detached. And so, recognizing these, we did some analysis of the property appraisers' data and just noticed, sort of to confirm what we had recognized, was that inside the MMTD, more than half of the single-family homes wouldn't even be eligible for a 500-square-foot ADU, and outside, more than half would be limited by that cap of 750 square feet. And so, as we came to looking at what some opportunities would be and looking at what other municipalities have done, one would be to allow the detached citywide, the other would be to increase that scale from 33% to something higher. We use 40 in the example, just looking at what we'd seen in other communities, and set a basic minimum that regardless of your single-family home size, you would be eligible for. We did 500 as an example here, just based on what the numbers showed that we got back, but certainly, you know, there are other options, and we saw several other, doing our research, and increasing that maximum allowable size above 750 square feet. We did 800 here, for example. That was just to show that it would be consistent with what Leon County's ordinance currently is, but we saw typically as high as 1,000. At this point, in an effort to sort of address the demand for it and help it be implemented a little more efficiently, the request is for initiation of an ordinance to address the stated issues and have to answer any questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move option one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on option one. Any questions, comments?
I think this is new urbanism at its best. It's fantastic. It gives people a lot more options, including allowing your parents to age in place and be part of it. I'm all in favor.
Great. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, commissioners and staff. Thank you all, leadership. Commissioners, we're now at the point of public comments. Are there any speakers on non-agenda items?
Mayor, we have no speaker forms.
Got it. Thank you very much. Commissioners, we are now at the place of sharing of ideas. Are there any brilliant ones?
I just want to mention that, well, stress that the applications for FEMA reimbursement for homeowners are, for all the costs that people incurred during the hurricane, are still open, and you can go to the Telgov website and download an application for that. And I think that they extended the deadline, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, good. But I know that, you know, the storm hit a lot of people really hard, and a lot of everybody. We talked earlier about the costs that were incurred just by the city, and everybody that was affected had cleanup costs, you know, repairs to homes and everything. Those are reimbursable to some degree by FEMA, and so you can go to the website and download an application and hopefully get some reimbursement for the costs that you had to put out.
Commissioner Maddox.
We lost MT Mustion recently. What a remarkable man. He passed at 96 years of age. Of course, his son Mark served on the city commission in the seat that I'm serving in now, and did a great job. His daughter Janet was a CPA, and his other son Perry is administrator at the hospital in Thomasville. And MT was not only administrator of Tallahassee Memorial Hospital for, I think, 25 years, and really brought it into the modern era, but he also served as a medic in Patton's Third Army at the Battle of the Bulge in World War II, where he received a Purple Heart for being injured in that battle and returned to duty. He was a great Tallahasseean, and it's a tragic loss for our community.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner, I wanted to, commissioners rather, revisit the issue of the Willis Dairy, which we had voted on before, and I felt like we really didn't give all and complete consideration to how our decision was going to impact an existing business in the community, or at least maybe others did, I didn't get to full, give the full weight of consideration there. So I'd like to pass the gavel and initiate the process to have that item brought back out of future agenda for additional consideration. So you have the chair, and I'll make the motion.
And Mayor, let me just suggest the appropriate thing would be for you to make a motion to reconsider the denial of the requested map amendment and land use map of Willis Dairy, and then that motion needs to be seconded and voted on. And if there is a majority that wishes to vote in favor of that, then we would want to set it and renotice it for a public hearing another date, and the appropriate date would be March, I'm sorry, May 23rd, when we already have a joint city-county comprehensive plan meeting scheduled, and we could put it on the agenda then.
Great. I'd like to make a motion reflecting, move, an item reflecting the comments made by the city attorney.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
Dyes for lack of second.
Mr. Mayor, I want to give you this back, and I will second the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the reconsideration. If there's, yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, the reason that I seconded the motion, as you all know, I voted against this rezoning the last time it came before the commission, and it was largely, that vote was largely based on what I had heard from the community, from the neighbors, in terms of the issues that they have had to deal with concerning events and activities that were occurring on the property. And, you know, I have made it no secret that I, since my coming to the commission, whenever there are issues like this impacting neighborhoods and communities, I have come down on the side of the neighbors when they've had an issue in their neighborhood like this, and the potential for even greater intrusion into those neighborhoods. And so when I thought that this issue was going to come back up, the Willises invited me to come out and visit their property, which I had not done. I had not heard from them, because as was explained to me, they thought that this was going to sail through, it was recommended by staff, it was a 6-1 vote of the planning commission, and they had no idea that they needed to speak or make a case for themselves at that meeting, and so they didn't. And so I took the opportunity to visit with them on yesterday and spent some time and learned a lot about the history of the Willis Dairy Farm and the vital role that it played in the history of this community, how upstanding the family has been in the history of this community and are now. What I also heard was their commitment to work with the neighbors. As a matter of fact, they have already, the two issues that I heard had to do with parking and the noise emanating into the neighborhood from activities that occurred on the Willis Farm property. What I heard them tell me yesterday was that they have already addressed the issue of parking. There will be no on-street parking on Goodwood Lane or Road, or whatever the street is that abuts their property behind, in the neighborhood. They have an arrangement with Goodwood Museum to use parking on their property and have guests shuttled back and forth. They've addressed the noise issue. I think the last time there was a complaint, it was a van that they had an issue with that refused to lower their volume or decibel level, and they've told me that they don't plan to use that van again, and will bring those kinds of events inside a dwelling on the property. And so, you know, and they've agreed to reach out to the neighborhood, to have an open house and invite individuals from the neighborhood who may have had complaints to come over and to meet with them and see how they can work together. And, you know, we've encouraged that in the past. Kalarn is the last issue that came to mind, where we encouraged the developer and neighbors to work together, Frenchtown is another, and they were able to come to an agreement that everybody was comfortable with. You didn't have 100% of the neighbors in either of those instances that agreed with what the final position of this commission was, but I think generally, there was agreement, and we gave them the opportunity to do that. And so that's why I am willing to reconsider my vote and to give the Willises an opportunity to appear before this commission and make a case for why we should approve this zoning. In addition to the change in zoning, they have also applied for a historical preservation overlay of the property, which allays some of the neighbors' fears about commercial development on the property, because with that historical preservation overlay, it will be limited as to what can be done on the property in terms of any type of commercial development. And so for those reasons, I seconded the motion to give them an opportunity to make the case before this commission, again, as to why we should grant them the rezoning change that they have requested.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll just be brief, as simply to say that I think there is an opportunity to try to find some common ground on this property, and I think that we, short of shuttering this business, frankly, a business operation that pre-exists nearly everything around it.
Yes.
And the only reason why I say nearly is because clearly I know the practices of the Goodwood Museum clearly are some of the, among the oldest in this part of the state. So for those reasons, I support the opportunity to, hopefully for some level of a compromise, and give these folks an opportunity to make it right between their practices on-site and the neighborhood around it. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Maddox.
Well, as you know, I voted for this amendment, and I'm all for the, it's really because of my honoring the Willises for the absolutely exquisite job they've done with preserving this property, and also with the additions and preserving the feel of the history in every, all of the preservation. I had been there before, and, but, I have, and we discussed this, I visited yesterday for an hour or two, and we have, this is not an ordinance change, really, this is a conference of plan amendment. And for us to take this up in this way, outside of the cycle, and I'd have to ask Wayne Tetter to come up and give us a little bit of guidance here, because I'm not really clear, I am not ready to change our process and how we deal with conference of plan amendments, because in that process, that's a tried-and-true process, it's been developed over a period of time where the interests of every involved party are taken up and given equal consideration. If this were a conference of plan adoption hearing, I could see reason behind why we might be having this conversation, and I think that I would like to basically table the discussion. I support the operation, and I want to see a result, but I'm not comfortable sitting here reevaluating, out of the conference of plan cycle process, establishing new methods whereby in the future, every single solitary decision that we make on a land use decision is then reexamined, and we have people coming in from every direction asking us to change our positions. I really do believe firmly, and I would like to ask Mr. or Ms. either one Willis to come up and share with us the changes they already intend to make, but the one requirement that I had put on them yesterday was that they really have to come in with some support from the neighborhood, and I just don't think it's fair at this moment in time to say that we are ready to move ahead. I don't actually myself have confidence in, there are some things I'd like to talk over with the planning folks, as far as what type of conference of plan change might be the most appropriate, but I'm uncomfortable with this, and I'm uncomfortable with doing it today. So we can either table it until our next meeting, or until the conference of plan public hearing, and make a decision at that point, because the, under normal circumstances, because it is a private amendment, they would have to skip the next cycle. If we submit this as an amendment of our own, a public amendment, then we can do it, and that's the expedited route to success. But at this point, I don't feel that I have had enough discussion with our planning staff about the true meaning of the method that we're using here, to actually be supportive at this very minute of this motion.
Got it. And Commissioner, just notwithstanding your comments about the comprehensive plan, the motion is to reconsider the question, not to make a decision around where we might land on the actual question of the rezoning, but I get your other question, which is, what does this fit in the process of sort of comprehensive plan changes?
So where is Mr.?
Well, Wayne can help us with this, but basically what we're doing here is, because it was denied, there was no transmittal of this requested amendment to the state agency that has 30 days to review it. Everything else that passed and was approved has been transmitted, and therefore, on the 23rd is a joint meeting, those will be considered for final action, okay? The most we could do under this is notice that the reconsideration will take place on the 23rd, and have discussion on it then, and approve it for transmittal. It's going to be out of order, because the state, under state law, has 30 days to look at it before we can adopt it, okay, in a comp plan situation, and that's where we end. So we, in fact, will be creating an out-of-order process for this, and Wayne, I'll let you make any comments you want from your perspective as the land use person.
And Mike, if I could follow your comments to the question, so my understanding of what our attorney just said is that we could reconsider on the date of the adoption hearing, and then subsequently even transmit it, which wouldn't even require an out-of-cycle amendment, essentially. Is that true?
That's what I heard as well, but I'm not sure of the action, so this is, again, it's going to be a legal issue, whether or not it's going to be advertised appropriately, we'll need to go and look at that, and that would be in your agenda materials for your comp plan adoption meeting when we're discussing this issue.
Okay. So your recommended action is?
You know, this is clearly a legal matter. You have the policy to initiate this amendment on your own. We can do that with any amendment in the comp plan for anyone, so you always have that authority, if it's your will to bring this back for discussion. We can put that on your agenda item for the 23rd, to whether or not to initiate, to move it through the process. We have the agenda materials written for the comprehensive plan amendment as is. If there are other issues that are out there that we need to be aware of, we need to know what those are so we can address those issues.
Well, I think, and if I could, the difference in what I, in introducing an amendment, an out-of-cycle amendment, or a, you know, would be beginning over, essentially, and what I heard the attorney say was that if we reconsidered at the adoption hearing in the venue meeting as the LPA?
Joint City-City-County Commission.
Yeah. I think that, what I heard him say was that we could actually make the, reconsider the decision to transmit, and then at that point, transmit basically the same amendment, which would only take 30 days. That's different than proposing an out-of-cycle amendment. I mean, then, I mean, what you're saying, we're either going to reconsider the vote of the existing amendment, and then transmit it instead of not, and then have 30 days for them to evaluate, or we're going to initiate a new out-of-cycle amendment, which starts the amendment process over. Now, isn't that different?
Lou, I need your legal opinion.
I think essentially it's the same, because we have to transmit it, and we have to approve it, a majority vote to approve both the comp plan and the map amendment. We can do that on the 23rd. You're going to have to agree to do another subsequent joint adoption
Right.
down the road, after the state agency has had 30 days to review it. Or you could separately agree to do, pick this up totally out of cycle and start in September, or October, or August, with a new process for this particular item. Those, in the past, you've been very careful about not doing that, for purposes of not giving precedent to folks to not follow the twice-a-year plan that we do.
Well, if we at least discuss it in the context of an actual public hearing, I think it'd be a lot more comfortable.
Well, we, we're going to have to renotice this, and we're going, Wayne, for sure, if you take the action today, I think we may if you take the action today, I think we may... I'm not sure advertisement-wise, notice-wise, that we have enough days to the 23rd to properly notice it as a land use matter.
As long as the advertisement goes out within 10 days, we should be covered.
Okay.
So, our decision tonight is to consider it on the 23rd?
No, that's the question.
That's the question on whether... Right now, the issue is to vote on the motion to reconsider. And as part of that motion, if you vote in favor, you'd be putting it on the agenda and we would be giving everyone notice to... On the 23rd to vote on the substantive issue.
Of?
Of whether or not to... The first thing, if it's approv...
Right.
If your motion to reconsider is approved or not, then it will be on the agenda on the 23rd. The first appropriate motion would be to reconsider the denial. And so, there'd have to be a majority that voted to reconsider the denial. And then, if there's a majority that passed that, then there would have to be a separate vote on approving the... For transmittal, the land use change.
On the 23rd?
Yes.
Just so that I'm clear on the process right now, the question we have right now is a motion to reconsider our original decision. It is not a vote on the actual decision itself. That decision comes presumably, if the motion passes, on the 23rd.
Correct.
And then, on the 23rd, there has to be another question of whether or not we're going to change our position.
Right.
Got it. Commissioner Maddox.
Just to clarify to help you a little through the procedural stuff, and then I'll tell you where I feel on the issue. Number one, what you're really doing today is voting whether or not the city commission will take a position on asking for reconsideration at a subsequent meeting of joint city and county commissioners. You cannot technically move for reconsideration at a city commission meeting for a meeting of a joint body. You must move for reconsideration in the same meeting that you denied. So, what you're asking for today is for the city commission to take a position that they would ask for reconsideration at the joint meeting. That's a process-wise. Now, on the substance of the issue, I just want to explain where I am. And I've explained this to the applicant. I think they're great folks and do a great job there by all accounts. And Mr. Mayor, I agree with you that it would take great precedence for me to the fact that they outdated everything around them. The reason I cannot support approval when we get to the actual spot of approval is because the Willis's developed around them and developed the property and sold houses under, you know, the promise of residential uses and then later changed their use for the existing house and barn there into a party hosting use. So, to me, it's an equity issue. Had they not developed the property around them and the property encroached upon them with their original use, I would be voting a different way. But I can't support this motion nor will I support it on reconsideration.
Got it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Zephyr, yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments. Because I voted against it on the first vote. Now, I'm going to vote against it again for a couple of reasons. First of all, I was interested in the email that I received from them that had several notes of support from neighbors, of which none of them lived on Goodwood. And that concerned me a little bit. And there still doesn't seem to be an effort to bring the neighborhood together. I know there's a promise of doing that, but it hasn't happened as of yet. Additionally, as much as I want to have confidence in Goodwood being able to provide parking, what happens when Goodwood has an event on a weekend? Where does the parking go then? So, I'm going to vote against this again because I think there's still an opportunity for them to step forward, to meet with the neighbors, to show a better plan for parking. But they can do that in the future because at this point, they have a commitment that anything is changed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, if we don't reconsider the issue tonight, they're never going to be given the opportunity to demonstrate that. And so, you know, the... I mean, they could come in with an agreement, a written agreement from Goodwood for the parking and how the shuttling is going to be paid for. If that's what we want, they can bring that in. But I think that they were led to believe that this was going to be a done deal when they came to that meeting. And so, they didn't come prepared to speak. Nobody represented them at that meeting. And so, they weren't able to... They weren't given an opportunity to make the case for why they're seeking the zoning change. From what I understand, there is no organized homeowners association or neighborhood association in that area. And so, they would have to reach out to individual property owners to make that happen, which they have agreed to do. I think we ought to give them that opportunity. This is a business that we're talking about. And if they aren't given this opportunity, I can only base my decision on what they've told me. They seem to be honorable, reputable people in the community. And so, I take them at their word that if they aren't able to do this, their business may fail. And I don't think that that's what any of us want in this community when just tonight, we've talked about economic development in the city of Tallahassee and then what they do for the community. We've got to take that into consideration. There are many not-for-profit organizations, but for their property may not have a venue for holding their events. And though that was the nature of the letters that we read in that email. So, I think we ought to at least give them the opportunity to make the case for why they are seeking this zoning change and give them the opportunity to work with the surrounding neighbors to come to some agreement.
Great. Commissioners, thank you. The question is on the reconsideration. Commissioner Miller?
Before you go there, I would like to, well, either have Mr. Willis come up and tell you or else go over it myself as to what they are... How they intend to change what they do in the future. I think probably it would be better if he did it mainly because I want it on the record. Because I will say that until these conversations occur with the neighborhood and until you all come to an agreement that everybody's going to be able to live in peace in the future, I can't vote to transmit this. So, if you want to come up and at least share with the others some of the reconsiderations you've had on your own that you shared with us yesterday.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Frank Willis, 1609 Centerville Road. We are diligently working with our neighbors to try to inform them about what it is that we're doing there. We have met with many of our neighbors. We have many letters from our neighbors. Even some of them felt like they had been misinformed about the...
Tell us what you're going to do differently this next time.
The process and have asked that their names be taken off the petition, you know, to deny it. So, we are changing our contract. We're working through it. We've got a great business. There is definitely a need for this in Tallahassee. The phone rings off the hook every day and we are able to book it into the future, you know, about 18 months into the future. People, you know, are wanting to book it that far ahead. We have found that we need to reduce the number of people that we allow on-site, so we are going to reduce that number to 125 people. We are only going to allow... Our contract, this is all written into our contract. We have a very good ironclad contract. We will keep the parking to 45 cars in our existing parking lot with no parking along Goodwood Drive. We are moving music to the inside. There'll be no amplified music on the outside of the barn. I think that will take care of the noise complaints. And we are... We can go ahead, I think, and have an open house maybe first to next week, possibly. You know, we need a little time, I guess, to notice the neighbors of it. But we've been going at them individually just because it's, you know, it's kind of difficult to get... There's 50 people on the petition to deny. There's probably 650 people in the 1,000-foot notification area. So, there's a lot more people there than just, you know, the ones that are on the petition. So, we are trying to contact as many as we can and we've gotten quite a few positive, you know, returns from folks. So, I think we can address all their concerns. This is something that we need to be able to do to continue the sustainability of a historic site. The original house there is an 1890 farmhouse. It may be probably within the... Certainly, the 15 oldest houses in Tallahassee existing. So, it's a treasure there that we're trying to hang on to. We want to keep the entire piece of property, you know, together. Otherwise, it'll be split up. You know, we won't be able to maintain or hold on to it into the future. They're just, you know, the expenses are so great living that close to town. So, I think we can, you know, allay all your fears and I think we can allay the fears of the neighborhood. So, if you'll give us that chance, I think we can make it work.
Commissioner, are you satisfied?
Yes, we'll discuss this. You understand that all we're going to do is discuss it in the proper setting essentially is what I view this on that, the 23rd of May. But I hope that you are able to show us on that day, when we are discussing it, the significant progress with the neighborhood. And I certainly hope we don't get any noise complaints within the next several weeks. I don't want to set up a situation long-term where there is going to be noise complaint from the neighbors for now on. Obviously, you are on Centerville, but you are surrounded by homes. And they're the ones that are upset. So, I feel confident that if you offer these folks a tour of your place, they'll be more than happy to come over there. And I wish you the best of luck. I see a way that you can make it sustainable, but it's going to have to be a way that does not alienate and upset your neighbors. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. All right. Commissioners, we do have the question on the floor. All those in favor, the motion to reconsider, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no.
Wait a minute. The motion was to discuss reconsideration at the May 23 meeting.
Right, but we have to initiate the process to bring that item back.
Your motion has to be to put the motion for reconsideration on the agenda.
On the agenda.
If you want to have it on the agenda, say aye. If you don't, say nay.
So, city attorney, the...
You had it totally correct, Mayor.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes three to two. This item... The question around this item will be readdressed on the 23rd. All right. Commissioners, any other items in this portion of the meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't want anybody to assume that by my absence, that's the reason there are no public speakers today. I don't think I can take credit for that, although if it turns out to be that way, I could certainly consider this for future meetings, if you permit.
If that's the case, you're banned from the city chamber for future meetings. Thank you all for this evening and we stand in adjournment.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.